All right, it's been six o'clock. Choir being present, we'll call this meeting to order. You have a copy of the agenda there? Is there any changes? I know there are.
Yeah, the main change is the audit. We're going to push that back to January. This is kind of the short version of what's going on with our audit and why we had a delay. So, we had SRR three funds on both FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three. Those are both past years. When the audit was going on, they saw a discrepancy there that we need to transfer some funds on our previous budget, so this has no impact on our current budget. But from our previous funds, the general funds to capital funds to balance that budget in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and forty. So basically, when that SRR money was coming in, we were putting it in the general fund and we needed to be putting it in the capital fund because we were building with it. So, we need to make that transaction so that the audit will match up and everything will look right. So, there's no impact on the current budget. The auditor's office was still working on our audits today. I just got the call on this at noon. They won't be finished until later this week. We'll submit our audit to DESI before the December thirty-first deadline. That's when the state has to have it. So, the board will hear the audit results and approve the audit during either a special session this month or the January eighth meeting. You're not required to approve that before we submit it to DESI, but if you would like to hear it before, then we can call a special session of the board or we can hear it and approve it in the January regular session meeting. So, one of those things that the auditor didn't get it until this afternoon, so we would like to have had this taken care of previously, but that was kind of out of our hands. So, there's the audit update. Clearly, we're not going to have an audit review tonight.
And we'll talk later in the meeting about whether or not we want to have a special meeting or just wait until January to approve it. Any other changes?
That's the only change.
Any other hires or...
We did have one, yeah, one new hire, Mike Charlton. The choir teacher effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That's the one I've, we've talked about previously. So, that would be an add to your new hires.
Any questions concerning the agenda, the consent agenda? Then I would receive a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then I guess we're ready to go on to administrative reports?
Yeah, just a couple of opening statements, again, a reminder of your CSIP goals there. Make sure you glance at that once in a while when we go over our agenda. This is a reminder, we have our CTE training facility open house tomorrow night from five to seven. You can take a look at the training facility. Coach James and Coach Payne are both going to be down there and they'll be happy to show you around. And then if you just drive up the hill there to our Innovation Hall, I think that's right?
Correct.
Yep. Innovation Hall will be open. Josh will be there. Our teachers will be there with some kids and they'll be able to kind of demonstrate what they've been doing and show you around a little bit. So, that's open to the public and hopefully a lot of people will turn out to take a look at those two new buildings. The other MODA building's still very much under construction and we're not ready to open that up to the public yet. And then our Christmas Extravaganza will be Wednesday night from five to seven. That's always a big community time that we just like to invite the community on our campus and we've got lots of student groups doing a variety of activities, lots of things for the kids to do. We'll have some lights. Santa will be there. I think the elementary's doing some things, some activities in the elementary, so kind of indoor-outdoor events and that'll be on the street there between the elementary and the middle school. So, it should be a lot of fun tomorrow, or Wednesday night from five to seven. And then I just wanted to mention, it was announced this week that we have a new Missouri Commissioner of Education, or will in June. When Senator Esslinger's term is up, she will become our new Commissioner of Education. That's really exciting for those of us in the field. She has always been a champion of public education. She was a superintendent at West Plains. She comes from Gainesville, just had a lot of time in our area and championing education. So, I think that's a really good move for our state and we're excited about that. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Well, who wants to go first tonight?
I've got Mr. Schmidt. Let's go with that.
We'll start with the events we've got on there. The open house, the Christmas Extravaganza. We also had the art show and Christmas concert on Thursday night. So, the band and choir and then the arts will be on display. We've got our faculty Christmas breakfast on Wednesday. Things have been going on. Boys and girls basketball both took third place in the tournament. JV won the tournament this weekend. We took a trip to St. Louis to visit Hancock Place School District and saw what they're doing with evidence-based learning and instruction. We also took some people to Rogersville for Go CSD presentation from Dr. Jeanette Westfall and that was a similar subject matter. It's competency-based education. So, our staff has got to see both of those. November thirtieth, we hosted a regional safety meeting. We had Special Agent Chris Hilliard from the Springfield FBI office down here in that meeting and we got to see our talk about different things that are happening in schools in our region. And then we've been doing the twelve days of Quizmas for our bear time. They answer trivia questions and the winning groups get to go pick some prizes. You guys won. How were the prizes?
Pretty good.
Pretty good prizes? So, Mr. Knapp and the student ambassadors are doing that and of course, Ms. Amanda gathered our prizes for us. She's got a good eye for those things.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Schmidt?
Do you want me to do the other part?
Yeah, let's go ahead and slide into that. Mr. Schmidt has kind of a bonus segment tonight that he'd like to talk to you about Portrait of a Graduate, which I've mentioned in my bear reports, but this'll give you a little bit better idea of what that looks like.
You can go ahead and do the next. So, Portrait of a Graduate. As you can see, it says Portrait of a Graduate is a school or district's vision for student success. The vision describes skills and competencies that a community agrees that young people need to thrive in learning, work, and life. Shows student academic success matters, but so does a student's ability to adapt, collaborate, communicate, think critically, show empathy, learn, and take personal responsibility. In other words, this is our end goal. This is what we want students to be or to look like, or the skills we want them to have when they graduate from Willow Springs. And this is an example of a portrait of a graduate. You can see they picked their main characteristics. They can explain them here. So, Collaborative demonstrates the ability to work independently with diverse perspectives to promote learning and achieve common goals. So, this is their idea. This is Omaha. This is their community's idea of what a graduate should look like. And if you look at Portrait of a Graduate, none of them are the same. And that's because no community is the same. And this is truly something that needs to be from the community, what the community wants this school to produce as far as graduates, what they look like, what they can do. There's some more. This is Kettle Moraine, the school district in Wisconsin that we visited earlier, and several different ones. You can see there's a lot of difference in all of these. Some of them may be a little bit similar, but they're all individualized to the school and the community that they serve. So, why am I talking about this to you? Purpose of public education shouldn't be just for students to earn credits and graduate, but to prepare them to be successful in our community and beyond. In order to do this, we need to begin with the end in mind. By having a better understanding of the destination, it becomes easier to plan how to get there. So, as I was putting this together and then I, we talked with our Student Advisory Council the other day. Couple of years ago, we were looking to build a house and my wife has like two huge books that are this thick of different houses in there and everywhere we would go, oh, I like that house, I like this house. So, eventually, we figured out, hey, this is what we want. And once we have that picture, now we got to figure out how to get there. So, I got to figure out what the plans look like, what the materials we need, and then how to build it. So, Portrait of a Graduate is the picture of that house all finished. That's what we want. And then once we have that, we know what we want, then we can make sure that what we're doing gets us to that point. So, when we know what we want our kids to be when they leave here, then we know, okay, we work backwards. This is where we're going, now how do we get there? So, we need this piece, this piece, this piece. And this is not just a high school thing. This is not just a school thing. This is everybody. So, we need input from students. We need input from staff members in all buildings. We need input from board members. We need input from business leaders. We need input from community people in general. And so, what we're asking for you is to start thinking about these type of things and we'll come back to you at some point and say, okay, what do you have for us? What's your input? What do you think a graduate should look like? So, we'll get input from all these different groups. We'll set up a committee to then look at all the data that we get and make decisions on what is important for our community. We'll review the data, develop the Portrait of a Graduate, review the recommendations, and eventually present it to you guys for approval. So, what we need is your input on what do you want a student to look like when they graduate from here? What characteristics, what skills do you want them to have? Any questions?
Okay, I'm going to ask the obvious one. Not all graduates are going to look the same, I would think. So, how do we differentiate?
They will not all look the same, but what skills do you want them all to have? There will be some skills that are important and that's what you want.
So, is it personalized to each student?
No.
So, it's an overview of what we think?
This is an overview of what we want. This is what we're trying to develop in these students.
Would the college-bound student have the same set of skills as the work-bound?
Yes. Because what we want is, we want them to be successful when they leave here, whatever field they go into. Now, will they also have different skills? Yes, but the same core set of skills or characteristics would be the same for all students.
So, believe the building of competence?
Do we want them to be able to communicate or do we just want some of them to be able to communicate? No, we want everybody to be able to communicate.
How's this so much different than what we got in place now?
What do we have in place now?
That's what I'm asking.
That's what we got in place. We got, we're trying to get them to graduate. We're trying to get these credits. We don't have this. We don't have, hey, we want these characteristics set out for everybody to see and say, this is what...
Why don't we? Where has it been? Why are we just now discussing this?
That's a good question.
Why are we discussing it now? We, because we're operating, we've been operating on the old-school mindset of the kid gives an A, they get their credit, and that means they're going to be successful and we're going to send them out into the world in good stead.
All they got to do is get these credits and...
Yeah, this makes you think differently about what is it that we're graduating them with. Right now, when they walk across the stage, yes, they've earned their credits, so they're getting their diploma. This is saying, yeah, you earned your credits, but also, we feel like you're going to be a good communicator, you're going, whatever else the community decides is important for our graduates to be proficient in.
How do you, and I don't know how deep we're diving into this right now, but how would you evaluate?
Yeah, how do you grade it?
If they're, if they're meet a level of communication or hit these marks, how do you decide if a student has...
That's a really good question. I don't know that that's something we want to dive too deep into tonight, but there are methods for that.
Yeah, I think there's more discussion.
Oh, yeah.
So, is there like more classes, like life skill classes that you'll add or...
Not necessarily, but how we approach classes and what's done in those classes could change.
Yeah.
I'll look at that up there. Once you got their students' ability to adapt, collaborate. Looks like to me that a lot of extracurricular activities, I would think we do a lot of that, sir. Which we're doing now, right?
We do. We do our extracurricular activities and we try to find ways to get more students involved and provide opportunities in different ways for this. Any other questions? Surface questions, not deep.
We will double back to this topic in the retreat.
I don't know that I fully understand it.
And that's okay. This was just kind of a throw it out.
And we've got more information that we can provide.
I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, is this going to cost something?
Yes. It's going to cost time. That's what's going to cost us because this isn't something we're going to do in an hour and throw this together. This is something that our hope tomorrow at the open house is to be able to get some information from people who show up there. There'll be an opportunity to provide some input there, but we want to also take our time, we want to do this right. This is our goal. This is what we want, so we don't want to rush it. We want to take time and make sure, hey, this is what our community wants. It's not what I want, it's not what you want, but it's what the community as a whole says this is what Willow Springs graduate should look like.
I think it's a great idea.
Does this go one on each?
All right. Do you have any more questions? I'd be happy to answer them and provide more information and like Dr. Smith said, we'll visit it some more and hope to get some good input.
All right, so our numbers are holding steady at the middle school. Attendance has been pretty good. As you can see here, everything's about like it's been being as far as that goes. Some things that have been going on at the middle school. On the sixth, we had our staff breakfast and staff meeting for December. And then also on the sixth, Mr. Cochran and I met with the other area SCA middle school principals. That's something that we've started doing kind of just this year. And so, there's been some really positive discussions there. Just meeting with them and knowing who they are and being able to collaborate with them has been really, really beneficial. So, that was our second meeting and we did let Mr. Cochran out of the building to go to that one. Culture and Climate Committee have been meeting and planning. They planned several events. One of them that I'll kind of skip around here a little bit was the Thanksgiving Assembly. That was one of our celebrations here, which was a huge success. They have a couple more events planned coming up. On the fourteenth, they had the school-wide movie and popcorn and then on the fifteenth, the Bear Up and Holiday Assembly. On the fifteenth there, that Bear Up Assembly, that is our, kind of what we did before with our Student of the Month. We've now gone quarterly with that and that's where Robert Hollis comes and we recognize kids. I think it's seven different things that we recognize kids for during that time, so that's done quarterly now. And then on the twelfth, which is coming up tomorrow, we have student leaders that are going to go visit the nursing home. I've updated this a little bit, by the way. So, it's not all showing up up there. On the twelfth, which is tomorrow, we have student leaders going to visit the nursing home. I'm not sure exactly what all they're going to be doing there, but I'm going to try to go to that and see what else going on there. And then on the thirteenth, we have the Christmas Extravaganza. Obviously, the middle school will be participating in that as well and we're looking forward to that. The boys and girls basketball teams are kind of finishing up their seasons. The boys will be at West Plains on Saturday and then on Monday and Tuesday, I believe. And then the girls will be at Houston on Saturday and then they will be back at Houston on Monday and Tuesday in shootouts and that will cut around out their season. So, in the middle school, we've also finished up our, or are in the process of finishing up our second round of iReady testing. And this is something that I'm really, really proud of. Our scores, for the most part, are all trending in the right direction, which is really a good thing. We've shown girls in math and English, whether it's bumping a kid that's three grade levels behind up or taking that kid that's just a grade level behind up. We're seeing this trending in the right direction in both math and English in virtually all grade levels. So, it's not like giant leaps and bounds right now, but it's trending in the right direction. I've got some of that information here. If you want to look at it, later we could probably sit down and look at it. To kind of round out the first semester here, Mr. Cochran and I sat down and met with all of our grade-level teams and just had a discussion about what was working, what wasn't, some things that maybe we need to do differently. And so, we've generated some good ideas there. Each grade level is kind of attacking this, similar, but maybe making it their own too. So, some great ideas generated there and the teachers are working together and that's really, really nice to see. So, that's all we have going on at the middle school.
I've got a question. On the growth there, is that just since the beginning of the year?
That, we're looking at the beginning of the year and we're getting ready to go back and look at like last year and see. I didn't have all that data, but I had it from the beginning of this year until now.
I'd be curious to see since COVID, what the impact COVID had and then how we're...
Is that our...
Yeah, don't we, are we going to give the iReady that in January, in winter, too?
Yeah, we'll get the balanced scorecard rundown from Mr. Wagner.
So, was this a new program? You got to run the ad program this year, wasn't you?
RTI is something that kind of new that we're implementing.
Elementary, elementary.
New math series.
But we're going to make it all.
We will, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about math in the middle school right now because it's this year that we'll update that.
That's good to hear.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Do you have anybody?
Mr. Rogers is out sick tonight, but I'll just go over his report briefly. They went to Willard Elementary School and observed a phonics program there. Phonics is really big, the science of reading, if you've heard that term, but they picked up some really good strategies on their trip there. They had their faculty Christmas party, their first and second grade Christmas concert, which is one of the biggest events in Willow Springs. If you've ever gone to an elementary Christmas concert, that brings in a lot of folks. They'll be participating in the Christmas Extravaganza on Wednesday and Bears for a Better Christmas, this was a nice note, expected to provide gifts for over three hundred kids this year. So, Mrs. Brower, Mr. Wagner, I mean, there's a bunch of people that contribute to that program, but that's a really great thing that the school and the community partner with to provide some Christmas gifts for our kids.
Didn't realize that we're setting up Friday night.
Saturday will be the shopping day for the kids.
And if you don't want to hand out toys, you can come to lunch and...
Bring it out. I thought you were going to do a bell ringer.
Well, my weekend's over. All right.
Parker, do you have anything?
Oh, not much. I, more than anything, I just kind of want to talk a little bit about some of the changes we've made from Rochester this year with some programs. We're trying that were different from before. You guys have probably seen on social media pushed out that in our middle school, high school, elementary, we started an adaptive PE class this year for our students that have not the ability to participate like their regular peers in PE. There's a combination of elementary students, through high school students in this class. I think we have twelve to fourteen kiddos that are in there with a lot of adult support because it's required. And so, Mr. Wilson, who's one of my middle school special ed teachers, is also certified in PE. So, he's teaching that class for us, which allows our students to, you know, really get the full PE experience. It's a smaller group, not quite as stimulating as a big group PE class, and they really, really have a lot of fun in there. If you need a good, if you need a pick-me-up in your day, you should stop by there and check out their PE class sometimes because it is brightening one's day. Something else we're doing in the high school this year, and we're just sitting around more of it and trying to get some things going. Our high school, our high school and middle school life skills class are trying to start a school-based enterprise where they're learning some work skills and this is another program for our high-need students that typically would not have work experience or job experience outside of the school setting where they're learning, you know, interview skills and how to work with others. We've purchased a freeze dryer and so they're learning to create a product and have everyone sample their products.
Some of them are good and some of them need a little work, but that's all right.
Yeah, we're still in the process phase of, you know, getting things off and running. Of course, it costs money. We were awarded this week a thousand-dollar grant to purchase some supplies from the Walmart Foundation, so it'll help us get the other things that we need to get that going. But the students are like creating a business name and they're going to be like marketing their product, but in addition, they also have to prepare the product and sell the product and learn how to make change and deal with people. So, they'll have like a full job experience through the process of this school-based enterprise that they're trying to do. So, just something a little bit different that gives our, even our highest-need students an opportunity to learn like their peers and maybe some employability skills. So, in addition to that, we've had, you know, been busy in the world of special ed, we always are. Testing a lot of referrals going on. And then today, we had a visit from two people from Department of Education Compliance Consultants that came in to do some observation of each of our buildings based on we, some needs from our discipline side of things. And they observed classrooms, interviewed some teachers in all aspects across campus and then they are providing some positive feedback in areas of improvement and writing to us in the next few weeks. So, we'll get an opportunity to look at that through some compliance lenses of things that they've noticed that we can do better. We had a small debriefing when they were finished today and they, you know, they had a lot of really good things to say about our school district and, you know, I'm sure they're like, we're not perfect and they, I'm sure they had some areas of improvement too, but like one of the notable things was how well-behaved our students are and classroom management was phenomenal for all of the buildings that they entered and how well, even in the elementary buildings, how well everything was with classroom management and transitioning from one activity to the next. So, they had a lot of, they said typically that's not something they see when they go in, but just how wonderful that was. So, they fell in love with a bunch of teachers while they were here and doing phenomenal things, so it was good for them to see that as well. And I'm sure that there'll be some follow-up after their feedback if they're interested in that, so.
All right, any questions for Ms. Parker?
I have one. How many kids are participating in your business that you're setting up?
Between the middle school and the high school, there are probably about twelve to fourteen kiddos.
Do they just ask to be in that or...
No, it's a, it's part of their special ed needs. If they're a student that could benefit from some adaptive behavior skills or life If they're a student that could benefit from some adaptive behavior skills or life skills type of things, it's a certain class that is scheduled into their schedule, and that we've identified that they possibly would not be able of holding a job down outside of school. So, we want to make sure that they are in a class where they have that opportunity to do so. So, it's kind of an E P team decision, and based on the parent need and the student need of what they want to see for the kiddo. Hopefully, one day we get to sample the product.
I was gonna say, quality control. The Skittles are really good.
We've had apples that were, marshmallows, I don't know, we've tried several different things.
Apples, I'm not a huge fan of.
No, it was kind of like strawberry for me. They're learning, and it's been fun so far, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Ryan? We have F C C L A.
All right, so I'm just gonna kind of introduce these ladies and then turn it over to them, and they'll be speaking to you guys tonight. So, this is our recap from August to December, and then what we hope to do second semester and then in the upcoming years. So, I have Madison Bay, she's year two, F C C L A member, she's my junior. She has really came out of her shell a lot last year, she was like, yeah, I'll join F C C L A, and now she's speaking at everything for me, like, hey, you wanna do this project? Yep, let's do it. So, really love to have her on my team. Next is my sophomore, Zoe. I really pushed her this year. I know F C C L A can be challenging, because you have to get up and speak in front of people, but I'm like, Zoe, you got this. So, she's here tonight, she'll probably be pretty shy, but I'm just kind of exposing her to what all F C C L A has to offer. Then I have Kayla Tendiggrass, another junior, third-year member. She has been our president this year, and she's ready to take on anything I throw at her, and she's always wanting to try new things. And then lastly, Emma, also a junior, year two, okay. And so, she was really shy last year, and I've slowly like built her up, and now she's like, let's do school board presentation, let's do a star event, let's talk in front of judges for eight minutes, whatever we need to do, let's do it. So, ladies, it's all you.
All right, my name's Madison Bay, and so I joined F C C L A my sophomore year. My freshman year, I was really intimidated by everybody that was in it, the teacher, I was really just worried, I was scared of people. But my sophomore year, I took some of the science classes, like the FACS classes, family consumer sciences, I learned a lot. I was like, oh, maybe this is good for me, maybe I'll learn some good life skills, some good leadership skills, and it's really helped me, because I'm here now.
I joined F C C L A to get out of my comfort zone and to meet new friends.
Well, I guess I'm next. I'm Kayla, you guys, you guys didn't catch that. I joined F C C L A my freshman year, I was just thinking, oh, this is like gonna be a great scholarship opportunity, put an application, stuff like that, no. I actually ended up falling in love with it. I love talking in front of people now, you can guess. I love being able to like show my leadership, I love being able to take control, make plans, and help make our community a better place.
So, I enjoyed my freshman year, I was intimidated like Madison was, I was like, I don't know about this, I love speaking in it. Then my sophomore year, I got out in this ride and was gonna be the teacher, so I was like, oh, surely I'll just join. I was like, oh, I'll just go to the meetings, like nothing, nothing too much. Then I started like doing classes, and then I went to the regional meeting, and that's whenever I realized, I was like, um, I want to get down there and do all the big things, and so, yeah.
We do a lot of convincing with each other, because sometimes we're like, oh, I'm scared, but we do a lot of convincing and make each other do things at the same time.
Okay, so FACS and F C C L A connection. So, F C C L A is the family and career community leaders of America. And FACS, part of it, might have been called home ec when you guys were in school, FACS, home ec. Same thing.
And in my household, I get corrected if I call it home ec.
So, FACS is our family consumer sciences. So, basically, F C C L A is kind of like the offspring from FACS. So, we share the same central goal, so as you can tell, both of them, family is the first thing, that's our first priority in both of these, that's what we always push to go first. So, currently, to be in F C C L A, you have to be in a FACS class, or you have to have taken one before. If you're not taking one, you could kind of wiggle in there from this Ryan, she's not too picky on that. But we also just kind of work together, so like our foods classes, if we have like a meeting with the rest of our F C C L A chapter, they'll bake cookies for us. F C C L A, we kind of help do some events around our school, like with, we've done food drives, stuff like that before, and that kind of goes hand in hand with our FACS class.
So, this year, we got the fifty-fifty grant, so fifty of it comes from the state, and then the rest of it comes from the school. And so, we were able to buy new supplies, just like the real care baby, babies and the baby belly. We were able to upgrade the babies and bellies, because like one of them was like falling apart, and then our babies were pretty old, and so we were able to get those. Then we got new equipment for the FACS class, or the foods class. So, we got a bunch of new mixers, we got some skillets. And then for, we got new heat presses, so we got one for shirts, and then we got one for cups. So, hopefully, next year, like for F C C L A, we can get some cups, or we can just have some nice shirts, and it makes it a lot faster for other people's projects.
Okay, so we have a lot of hopes for our future for F C C L A and FACS. Now, once we get moved over to the C T E building, hopefully in the future, it'll help our program to grow, and people will be able to do more and learn more, because right now, our classroom's kind of small. And like when you're cooking, you're kind of like running into each other, not being able to cook a lot. And even with sewing, there's not enough sewing machines, and we have a lot of kids. So, hopefully, when we get a rebuilding, we'll have some more sewing labs, and people will have more areas to learn more.
Okay, so some F C C L A goals. So, between like the past few years, we've kind of like taken note of how many members we have. We're staying pretty consistent with our seniors leaving and our freshmen coming in. So, we're really hoping to start increasing that. A personal goal I have between this year and next year, I want to have at least ten new members. Right now, I think we're sitting about thirty-five members, I want to increase that by ten every year, hopefully. So, basically, through F C C L A, you know, we can, leadership skills, obviously, so like coming in here, taking charge, taking part of events, star events. So, we're just kind of wanting to, those students who are afraid to come in here, we're wanting them to feel like they're able to, that they're able to do these things. So, we definitely want our school and our community to know more what F C C L A is. So, like a lot of people, when you think of F C C L A, you think of home ec, you're like, oh, that's for girls, that's just for cooking. That's just not the case anymore. F C C L A is kind of for everybody, we want everybody to be able to feel like they are accepted, they're welcome. You know, it's not just baking cookies, it's reaching out, taking leadership skills, going to job shadowing, kind of learning new things about how we can help people and how we can better ourselves. And then we want to be able to compete at the national level for star events. So, you're gonna hear me talk about that in just a little bit. Star events is kind of how we're showcasing our leadership, is kind of what that's for. So, we start at the regional level, and if you pass there, then you go to state, and we're hoping to go to the national level to get some national recognition for what our students are doing.
All right, like Kayla said, we have been showcasing a lot of these skills that we have. We started out the year with the homecoming dance, we know a lot of people that's in, I think they had fun, I had fun anyways. Hopefully, everyone did, and we got that going, we decorated, we planned, it was good. And then we had officer training, which me and Kayla are regional officers for the region nine area. So, we went and we taught a lot of some other officers that we have in our school district, how to be a leader and those skills that you need. Then we attended the Silver Dollar City Career Day, F C C L A joined us, and there were some sessions that you could join, and you'd go and you'd learn. Like the one I went to was about the medical profession, and you learn stuff about your future. After that, a few of us, I think we all went to the Fall Leadership Conference in Ossage Beach, I think that's where it was. There was a session, like a general session, and like the big officers, like the top-tier officers, kind of talked to you, and they got you engaged, and then you could kind of file out and go to like little breakout sections and learn a little bit, like different skills each time. Then, we had a flag football game that really engaged our community. I know a lot of people went, I wasn't able to go, but like there was a lot of people that participated, and I think just kids that aren't actually in F C C L A got to join, and I think they had fun with that too. Then, we had the Region Nine meeting, which was a lot bigger than officer training. And when we all got there, there was a speaker, very motivational, and a lot of members got to participate and play games, just have a good time. Then, we had Kindness Week, which was a couple of weeks ago. And one day, F C C L A, the organization, we set up a little hot chocolate bar outside, and a lot of people stopped and got hot chocolate to start off their day, we wrote on cups all kindness notes, and I think people enjoyed it. Then, F F A actually partnered with us for the bar mormon dance. It was the first time, hopefully there'll be more in the future. I think it kind of helps people go and get used to being with other clubs, and we all worked together. All right, here's some pictures. So, this is us, our big group that we took to regional officers. I think it was just the region meeting, we took everybody, and they learned a lot. And here's us all at bar mormon, there's a lot of members that went. And then Silver Dollar City, and this is us at Tame Terra for Leadership Conference, flag football. As you see, there's a large group of kids that went, and not all of them were in F C C L A. Then we have homecoming and our hot chocolate bar, we had some members from help, and the Veterans Day assembly, but Kayla will talk to you guys on that.
So, Regional Star Event Competition. So, all of us and everybody who is doing a star event this January, we will go to the, we are hosting it since Kayla is our vice president. And it's gonna be held at Crossway Fellowship, Crossway Fellowship. There'll be judges, and you stand up there, and it's kind of like a senior project. You'll stand there and do an eight-minute speech in front of a whole bunch of judges. And like I have a binder that has everything about like research and everything, and it just talks about all of your projects. Then Regional Officer Election, it's where you will have one voting delegate, and then about three of us are going, and you stand in and do like a one to two-minute speech in front of a whole bunch of people. And if you're elected, then you will be the next year's regional officers. Then, we're gonna have our Poop Queen Dance. F C C L A does the decorating and the planning of the dance this year. It's winter wonderland, so it's blues and silver and stuff. Then, we're also gonna have the Legislative Job Shadowing. So, two, either a junior or a senior, will go up to the Capitol, and they'll get to like watch a senate and representative, and they'll get like a little tour of the Capitol and everything. Then we'll have our Valentine's Day grams, we're not exactly sure what we're gonna do yet, but we'll definitely have an idea. And it just helps like fundraise for our club, and so that we can go on more trips and have more leadership. Then State F C C L A will be later in the fall, so if you do run for a star event and you go past your region, then you'll go to F C C L A, you'll go to state and get to compete at that. And then we have the Silver Dollar City trip, and so hopefully, at the end of the year, some of us will be able to go to that trip. So, hopefully, at the end of the year, we'll be able to have an excellent trip.
Okay, so star event, so like she said, since I'm our vice president of our Region Nine, here in Willow, we'll be hosting this. So, like she said, it will be at Crossway. So, star event is students taking action with recognition. So, like my star event was the Veterans Day Assembly, like Emma, she did a career investigation on cosmetology, I think. So, like I said before, we compete at the regional, state, and the national level. So, the top two from a region go to state, and then so on and so forth. So, also, I have to put this in there, we need help with judging. And our lovely school board, we would love if you guys could help us out. So, if you can, it is January tenth at Crossway, sorry to get nine, there won't be food, I promise. We will have a FACS teacher in the room with you, so it's just gonna be in the smaller church. There'll be three judges per like section, however we section that off. You'll be with the FACS teacher, you won't be alone, but we would definitely love some help and to integrate our community in there with us.
So, my star event was career investigation. This one Willow has never competed for, so I'm kind of like a first year. It's kind of just a rough draft with what we're gonna do. But the first thing I did was I went and job shadowed a lady in West Plains, and it's Ashley Rhodes. She does the revive solo. So, on October eighteenth during school, I got to go and job shadow her and see what she does for people and how she interacts with her clients. And then, so it's an investigation for a career, so I did a whole bunch of research, and I'm putting it all in a portfolio to present to our judges.
Oh, me again. Okay, so like I said, Veterans Day Assembly, that is my star project. So, kind of want to talk about in preparation. First, we had our lovely Mr. Schmidt approve it for me. So, in the past, F C C L A has done it before, and we've just had, you know, we just kind of throw it around, see what ideas we can get. This year, I really wanted to take action and make it bigger than last year. You know, in the past, we've had twenty-five, thirty people there, I wanted bigger, I wanted more. So, I wanted to have a breakfast, which we've done for the past few years, but I wanted it to all be student-led. So, we had these lovely ladies, they all helped me out, we got there early, we cooked food, we set up. We had our extra like middle school, our CAT students, I think they're still, I don't know. But they were in there helping us out, they had them greet people.
Let's call them gifted, we don't want to confuse anyone.
Gifted, I'm sorry. So, we had our gifted students in there kind of helping us out. The assembly was also, all student ran. It was also all student ran, so we had speakers Jeff Conger and Mrs. Courtney Foster. I don't know if you guys were able to attend, but if you were, we had a pretty big turnout this year. I think we ended up with fifty-three veterans attendance this year, so we doubled our previous. In conclusion, I really think it was like a great idea, it was a great star project. I love that I was able to bring in more community members, get to have more involvement with our kiddos in there.
All right, so that's about it. So, we are so excited to get to, you know, move our program to the C T E building, and hopefully, it'll get bigger, and we just want to involve more people over the years, and hopefully have more members. Anybody have any questions?
Kayla, right?
Yes, Kayla.
You described the board as lovely, and then you described Mr. Schmidt as lovely.
I like to put everybody on par.
How many members do you guys have in total?
I think thirty-five in total this year. Anything else?
The dinner was great, by the way.
Awesome, yeah, you guys are welcome.
Thank you guys for supporting us, we love to have you guys input on anything that we could do, and thank you for having us.
Ready for me?
They are.
I am Cassie Jones, I'm not sure if everyone knows who I am, but I do parents as teachers at the school, and it is a voluntary early childhood development program, offering research-based curricula that helps families raise children to be healthy, safe, learning, and ready for school. The vision of parents as teachers is that all children will learn, grow, and develop to realize their full potential. So, I do that by, it's a free program for the Willow Springs School District. Anyone can sign up if they have a child zero prenatal to kindergarten entry. And I just go into the home and work on meeting milestones, or help them with any kind of resources that the community can offer, and help families in a lot of ways, kind of beyond what I would like to. But that's kind of just in a nutshell of what I do. So, I see families that are very high needs, and I see families that are, you know, not real high needs, but the majority of my kiddos are high needs. This year, I only have twenty-six families enrolled right now, and of those twenty-six, twenty-one are high needs. And so, I have thirty-two total children with those twenty-six families, and of the thirty-two children, twenty-seven are high needs. So, it is a really good program to help people get resources they need. I've had some of your guys' kiddos on my caseload through the years, so, and grandkids, so.
Does the community, I mean, how does the community know about that, like if you didn't have? I mean, I remember when we did that, but I mean, it was, I didn't know anything about it. They were like, oh, Cassie Jones, I was like, oh, really, I didn't know. How do they find out?
Carla Clinton is a really good resource for me right now. Doctors are a really good resource, because they see kids probably more than a lot than other people. And just by word of mouth, like the families I see, kind of be like, oh, you need to get your kiddos. Like I used to have a really big Russian caseload, but they kind of have to build down, so. Do you find that they don't want to be involved? A lot of families, yes, I'll come like once, and... A lot of families, yes. I'll come like once and they kind of want me to be there as a babysitter sometimes. And when they find out that I'm not there to take care of their kid for an hour, then they, it's hard to get back in the home sometimes. Other times, it's, they really want the interaction and the help and the resource connection and stuff like that, but yeah. It's getting, I feel it's getting, this job is getting harder and harder because of that.
Going to the home.
Are you educating the child or the parents or both?
Both. Most of the time, both. We're supposed to be teaching the parents how to be their educator. But most parents want to leave the room or the inside of the home while you're there and go outside or do something else.
That's a pretty tall order really to go into people's homes and do what you're doing.
Yeah, I've had parents kick dog poop out of the way so I can sit on the floor and work with their kids. And yeah, I've left and called Officer Moore and told him I was not going back and for why. And yeah, it's been an experience for sure, so.
Do you ever anybody that, anybody that wants?
Anybody, this is free, for one of the Willow School District, yes, yep.
And so like pre-K kids, right?
Prenatal all the way until they go into kindergarten, so, yeah.
Unless there's another one we can move up to school itself.
You usually make your visits by yourself?
I do. I do all of my scheduling, yeah. When I was, when Bobby was my supervisor, he was wondering how we could get people to come to my classroom rather than me going to their homes, but I, other than Mandy loving bringing her, Grogan bringing her kids to my classroom, that was about it. Her insecure would be brought their kids to me all the time, but most of the parents do not want to bring them up here or don't have a way to bring them up here.
How frequently do you meet with?
Most of the time, once a month, but I have some parents that have asked for weekly. Some of our new Russians that have moved in that really need help with learning English.
How's your Russian?
I use a translator on my phone. Which, it's okay because the mom does too. She uses a translator with me, so. We're both learning.
Do you get an opportunity to visit with your peers in other schools?
Yeah.
And are other programs any different than ours or?
Most of the schools, like the parent educator is a teacher. And they kind of do this like after school or whatever. But I find it hard to schedule later than like five, so. Yeah, other kids are home and it's harder to work with the younger ones.
It's a valuable program and what, you know, anytime we can get that base knowledge for our students coming into preschool or for coming into kindergarten. That's such a huge help for our kiddos coming into those early grades.
I do screenings and so like if I notice that there's a kiddo that's really falling behind on milestones, I can contact our early childhood, now that we have the three-year-old early childhood and try to get them in there or connected to speech therapy, outpatient therapy, or whatever they need, so.
Look, I'm thankful that we have somebody like you, Cassie. There's zero chance that my wife would go into somebody's home and do the things that, you know, that you have to do, so.
You have, I appreciate, sorry.
Then you do what you do.
And do you have some kind of like state guidelines for like the curriculum for age or is that something you come from?
Yeah, I have a curriculum for prenatal all the way up to three. And then my other curriculum's from three to kindergarten entry. And it goes by months, like it's pretty broken down. It's pretty neat, yep. It's a really neat curriculum. Very resourceful, like I can ask parents, is there anything you guys need like help on? They're like, yeah, my kid won't stop biting. I'm like, alright, I've got the perfect handouts to bring you. And I don't have, my kids were not biters, so I don't know anything about that, so. Anything, I mean, it can, it's full of information, so.
Well, we do appreciate everything you do and would like to help you any way we can. So if you have ideas, don't hesitate to go to Mr. Rogers or Dr. Spencer.
Just on campus is all I would like, is to be on campus.
Yeah.
We'll work on that.
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be a tough order to get them to show up when they need to, yeah. But we support you and appreciate what you do.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we're ready to move on to board and superintendent evaluations. We will move the superintendent evaluation to closed session. We'll do that there, that's alright with everybody. And the board evaluation. You can see the technology didn't really help me a whole lot in presenting you the summary of the evaluations. Cut, cut, it wasn't cut and paste, it was cut and paste. I tried my best to copy and paste, but it just wasn't letting me, so. It's a good thing my printer at home worked. So as you look at that board evaluation, you can see that we have several areas that we need to work on. Continuous improvement. Well, you want to just go down the list here, starting with vision and mission. Development, articulation, stewardship of the district vision of learning that is shared and supported by schools in the community. The average response there is two point eight out of four. Any comments there? I think we do try to support the vision of the district. Continuous improvement. We need to work on continuous improvement. With a score of two point one. Any comments there?
Well, I think part of that too is because of the pandemic, right? We haven't had a lot of data to really go over, I think, is that?
Are you talking about continuous improvement?
Yeah.
As academically as the district or for the board as far as development?
As far as monitoring district progress, so it would be looking at performance data and so on.
I think one of the, and we've identified this before, but one of the biggest challenges is the questions on these are extreme, like they're very wordy and so it's hard to fully, yeah, it's hard to fully understand the question to, you know, put an answer for. But as far as, you know, I mean, continuous improvement isn't exactly that. It's a continuous improvement and I think we need to figure out a path to hold ourselves accountable and then make sure that we are hitting the marks that the community elected us to hit.
Right, and I think outlining or outlining a standard set of data that we would look at periodically and, you know, a routine of doing that would help.
I agree. I think without laying out a clear expectation, it puts Marty and ourselves at a disadvantage to be able to provide what we need if we don't clearly know what we need or haven't been articulate that as a group.
And I think that relates to the number four there, the accountability goes along with that, which fits together. And I concur, these are wordy and the image or the picture I get of what they mean whenever they describe this may be different for each one of you. And so it's.
Well, you know, we talked about all the superintendent evaluation, we changed it because it's kind of the same reason. So if we evaluate the evaluation here, we can look at something different.
Should I go look at some options for you for next year?
Yeah, we might look at something different. So I do think we need to really look at this though and come up with some ideas on what we want to do in the future to address some of these needs. So my suggestion is that we put together, that I put together a committee, it'd be an ad hoc committee that doesn't continually exist, but until we are done with it. But to look at the evaluations and then come up with a set of recommendations for actions to address the evaluation. And my suggestion is that we formalize that committee in January and then discuss the recommendations at the retreat in February. Are, do you have comments or?
So you're gonna have, you're gonna formal committee in January?
Well, right, and I'll probably talk to the people that I want on the committee beforehand. But we will.
Then a month ago, you're gonna have my recommendations in that short time?
We'll work quick. I'm sure there's a lot of thinking going on already about that, so. And anybody that has suggestions, feel free to contact me and let me know. And I'll take it from there. Any other discussion on our evaluation?
I'm just, I'm slightly surprised at the community engagement. This is low as it is. I feel like this board and this, you know, the district and stuff, I think we're at a, I feel like we're at a pretty good place as far as community engagement. I think we've got a fairly diverse board that interacts. I'm surprised that we all went that low with women.
That is, yeah, that was the one that surprised me the most.
Could be a mistake in the calculation, but.
Well, to that point on community engagement, I mean, it's been said in here from different people. I mean, you can invite the community, but that doesn't mean they're going to show up.
Kind of like Cassie, she's got a program, you know, it means.
And that's no hit on the community, it just is what it is, you know?
But that may be something that we really need to look at is providing different opportunities for community members to provide input.
And you know, like, I mean, I go with my kids like they're open house. I mean, and there's thousands of people here. I mean, and you know, that's, I don't think that's necessarily something we have to do. What we choose to do is try to get the community in the building and see the things that we've, you know, done as a school. And I know that through the superintendent service class, whenever that was, two years ago, that there was, that a lot of the, some of the guys we talked to had, like they had like chili cookouts and different things to try to get the community there. And I remember one guy saying this and it's so true, he's like, if you feed them, they will come. And there's a lot of truth to that. But you know, and then all the, all the stuff was on the street during open house. I mean, that was, yeah, senior project, I mean.
And these guys, I mean, it's not, our open house didn't used to be that way. So credit to our admin, they've really.
I mean, it was a community event, or I mean.
And the things we're doing this week, and you guys I think are harder probably than yourselves than.
You take tomorrow night, I feel, you know, if you can be there, we need to be there tomorrow night because, you know, the answer questions along with Mr. Owens or Robert and all them down there. You know, I mean, we're proud of it, we did it, we need to be there to support it.
Yeah, it's definitely like a celebration, you know? Something that I think that was needed and wanted and it's something that we can all be excited about.
What Mr. Smith's talking about with Portrait of the Graduate, you're gonna get a lot of community input there. And we could take part in that for sure. We need to take part in that. The open house was a tremendous success and perhaps that's an opportunity for us to be present formally. I mean, about all of us were there, I think. And, but if we were there formally and providing an opportunity for input from people there other than just informally, that's an opportunity. I think to them, what do they call it now, bear fest or?
Yeah, there's matching stuffs, right?
But there's some possibilities there, yeah.
Mac on the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and then I was just gonna go on to the last.
That's where I was headed as well.
Yeah, and the suggestion there of using MSBA for training on a regular or annual basis. But on a regular basis, I think we need to build that.
Yeah, I think that's something that I find myself in a position often that I'm, you know, just really kind of unsure of how to do something or what we're supposed to do. And I think most of the time unintentionally, we, as board members, we step out of our lane, you know, and not realize what it was. And I know I've gone to Dr. Spencer or Spence. And, you know, just trying to figure out how to be part of this without getting outside of where you're supposed to be. And that's a pretty big challenge and, you know, we face a lot of that.
We're not known.
Yeah, we just, we just don't know. And I think if we could, you know, we could have a little.
How to advocate for something we're passionate about, but within the confines of board member role.
Right.
Sometimes it feels like you just stuck right in the middle of something.
Right. And you shouldn't be there, you know? But there you are, you know? Dr. Spence.
And I know how excited everyone is about the required board member training that we have to do.
Is that, that's coming, I've got an email, that's coming up, right?
Well.
Or we need to do it separately?
Yeah, we do it. Well, I guess we could have done it together, but you can do, it's only an hour.
I didn't know if it was collectively or.
Well, I went ahead and did that. They've got a set of videos on it, if anybody else has done it recently. But it was a very good training session on how kids could be sexually exploited. And a real life example and some parents that were brave enough to speak up. And it's a very valuable training session, so I encourage you all to do that.
No, I turned to yesterday.
Well, it takes a while, yeah. Get your portal set up and everything, yeah.
I got a call then about that. It says, after all these days, I did yesterday.
Is it an anger?
They're real helpful.
She sent me an email of my Facebook, so.
Alright, any other discussion on the board staff evaluation? We'll revisit this at the winter retreat.
Speaking of, the winter retreat.
Not bad.
I put this out for a few weeks to see if the state was gonna work and hadn't heard anything back. But I am now aware that one of our board, I was gonna use your name, but one of our board members cannot attend that day. But you can do February tenth?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I could probably even do the afternoon of the third, I just can't do the, I, yeah.
I could probably even do, I could probably even do the afternoon of the third, I just can't do the, uh, I, I, yeah, I don't know. We're in a basket, winter basket.
About the tenth, what does that look like for people?
Is that, am I in that league? Is that what it is in? Yes. That's also a birthday.
Tenth?
No. I fully expect, I fully expect a cake if we do it on.
Is the tenth acceptable? Or at least for now?
Yes.
For now?
Check back the basket.
We'll just, uh. Well, that's even more reason to have a meeting. No eclipse that night?
No, I can do it.
I don't know, I think the tenth.
Yeah, alright, cool.
I never know the time.
No, the third.
Oh, okay, so the third really isn't a good date.
I could do my virtual.
So my proposal will be Saturday, February tenth at nine AM location TBD, so I'll let you know the location as soon as I get some, I wanted to make sure we had a date locked down first before we went too far with that, so.
Alright.
That's, that'll be my proposal. Uh, beverage contract proposal, um, so for as long as I've, you know, back in the nineties when I was in school, we were, we've been a Pepsi school and we, uh, ten years was our, our last Pepsi contract and that expired at the beginning of this year, so we've been taking bids from uh, both Coke and Pepsi to be our supplier of, of drinks, most of the bacon sessions, vending machines, um, so you have, by putting your packets, proposals from both, um, I'm gonna recommend that we go with Ozarks Coca-Cola. Uh, they have a smaller purchasing minimum, which is a really, uh, big deal for us because we were having to purchase like seven cases of something from Pepsi and, um, you know, we don't always sell that, so it sits or we have to get them to come and take it back and just to be real blunt, customer service with Pepsi has not been good for the last several years, um, they also offer better rebates at seven dollars, um, per case, so. What we've done in the past and how things have kind of changed is Pepsi would give us a, a big chunk of money upfront and we would buy a scoreboard or we would buy something with that, and then we were locked into that contract for the last ten years. We're not gonna do that necessarily with Coke, there's no upfront money, but the money we're saving through that, we will put into a separate fund and that way when that time comes when we need something for our athletics, then we can dip into that fund to get that money that we're saving by going this route instead of going with Pepsi. It'll be a five-year contract, um, and I feel comfortable, um, going into that contract with Coke, um, and I feel confident that that that's, uh, that's the way we need to go, um, to continue our, our beverage contracts for concessions and vending. It's also a thirty percent, um, kickback on vending, which Pepsi, for the last ten years we've had, know we don't get anything off vending. Pepsi did come back and offered that same thirty percent, so we've kind of had a, a back and forth with them, but, uh, I would still recommend Coke as our, as our beverage contract.
When does that go on begin?
It would begin as, as soon as we approve it.
What's the rebate thing, how's the rebate thing work?
As far as, we get, like, if, if we, we don't sell that case, they come back and get it and give us a rebate, I believe that's how that, that works, but it's basically money back.
I think that's like they just give you back, what, is that what you paid for the case, I mean? I figured that just gave you credit for what you.
Yeah, I, it, there was a rebate and we get some money back, but the specifics, I don't know if that was in the proposal or not.
Can we get away from three dollar fall off water?
Maybe. The water would be, uh, Aquapina instead of Krispen or, or not Sonic or Aquapina.
So wouldn't it rebate be like you buy the three cases and then they, would they, after you sell them, they give you?
You get a rebate back? Yeah, it's probably more like it, yeah.
No, I don't see it, twenty-one bucks.
And I see it in here, but I'm just wondering.
Our concession person, Amanda Austin, I wouldn't have answered to that, but she's on here. Mr. Spence, you don't answer to that?
No, but I think that's where it is, I think we get seven dollars back per case, so.
Um, I've got to speak up here and say that I'm, uh, in favor of this. I've got a couple of problems, my, and this is just personal, I'm not expecting to sway anyone here, but I, I, just good conscience, I don't appreciate companies using schools to sell their stuff and, uh, especially whenever it's not good for our kids.
Or as it so does itself, yeah.
So, that's just my two cents worth, I know the school gets revenue off of it and I know they're gonna be drinking it anyway, but, uh, but that's just my personal opinion.
I like to see what it looks like without any contract and just having our own.
We, we talked about that, um, but that gets very complicated and very hard on our, our staff to try to make sure that we have all of that stocked and ready to go. And there's, you know, we just, it gets to be a big burden on our staff.
I think it's all label price.
Alright, any other discussion on that? Alright, then, we'll move on, uh.
Let's see that.
To the motion, um, the last bit of information, do you want to, did you need to provide us any information about the transfer of funds? On that transfer of funds from the general fund?
No, you've already given.
We gave, we have given our superintendent permission to make that transfer.
And it's a past, it's a past, um, budget, yeah.
So, we don't, that doesn't require the action or our part. Alright then, um, motion being ordered to, to approve the proposed contract with Coke for district beverage services.
Salute.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, motion passed, uh, motion being ordered to set winter retreat date for Saturday, February the tenth at nine AM. At a location to be determined.
Salute.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Alright, and I would, uh, receive the motion to.
Can I ask, are we, is this what we're on the motion here, is this for what we haven't seen yet?
On the sea?
On the, on sea?
No, we, we had to move that, yeah, so, we're, we're doing that, we do need to discuss though if you want to.
That's why I, I was making sure we were approving that to be sent.
No, we're, we're not, uh, so, do, okay, it, the, the guideline is it has to be sent to the state by December. But does not have to be approved by us.
Correct.
Um, but do we want to look at the audit before we send it to the state?
No, you can always go back to the state and add and do what, I mean, they just have to have it in their database at that point.
I, I don't know, I mean, do, we're not gonna affect the audit, the audit's a look back at what we've, we've done, I don't see any reason to call a special session, but that's just my opinion. We, we wanna see the audit, we're gonna break it down, we're gonna go through it in due time, and, you know, we're not gonna change anything behind us, right?
And that's pretty quick board meeting in January, I mean, it's early, Monday eighth.
That's what you, that's the idea.
Yeah, so, we're good on waiting until January to see the audit. Alright.
Eleven.
Alright, now I've received a motion to adjourn to the executive session.
Salute.
Motion paid and seconded, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.